May I have your attention, please? We're going to call the meeting to order. This is the August 27, 2003 Meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Mr. Evans, can we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The agenda was posted here at City Hall last Friday in accordance with state and local procedures. And, Mr. Chairman, if I could maybe give an update on two items on the agenda for people in the audience?
Please.
It appears that when we get to item number eight, which is the parking lot for the city of Palm Springs and Awa Kaliente Band of Kwia Indians formerly known as the Prairie Schooner Site, that we will not have a quorum of the planning commission. We'll officially declare that when we get to item eight, but just judging from who's here, it doesn't look like we'll have a quorum, and we will not discuss that item. And then also, number 10, that's the application by the city of Palm Springs for the Convention Center parking lot north of Amato Road. It appears we will not have a quorum on that one also. Both of these items, we're going to talk to the commission under commission staff reports about, at the end of the meeting, about a special meeting next Wednesday as part of your study session to pick those items up. But for anybody in the audience, we will not be discussing those two items.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. We have no minutes to approve at this meeting. This is the time, then, for public comments. Anyone wishing to speak on a matter relating to the city of Palm Springs, now's the time to come forward and express your thoughts. The time limit will be three minutes. We ask that if you do care to address the commission at this time, that you give us your name and address and sign the clipboard before you leave. If you are here on a specific item on our agenda, we would prefer that you wait until that item is called and give us your comments at that time. However, if you want to make your comments now, you're welcome to do so. So anyone wishing to address the commission at this time, please come forward.
I have property at 355 North Avenue to Caballeros. This is into, this is in regards to the parking lot for the convention center that you have tabled for next week. I came down here special to be here today with no notice that this would be tabled for later. And to preface this, only five of the members of our 20-unit complex have received a letter that these plans were going to be discussed at all. To date, only five of us have gotten that. I understand, as of Monday, one of our members had talked with the city and had found out that these letters had been sent out Tuesday and Wednesday of last week, but only five of us have received them, and this seems to be an ongoing problem. So, for this Convention Center Parking Lot Expansion north of Amato, we had addressed this to the head of city council. We weren't exactly sure who was going to be at this meeting. Dear Mayor Kleinheinst, we at Center Court Club have some concerns regarding the proposed parking lot for the Palm Springs Convention Center. We are all concerned with the proximity of the parking stalls being so close to the west wall for the following reasons. A precedent has been set on the south side of our property wall of a setback of 21 feet before the first row of parking stalls. The new plans are not consistent with that and have a setback on the west side of the property wall of only 10 feet before the parking stalls. On the south side of Center Court, there is a 31-foot driveway with planting several feet from the inside of the surrounding wall before the physical units. That with the 21-foot setback planting on the parking lot side of the wall gives a wide berth of 52 feet before arriving at the actual unit property. On the west side of Center Court, there are only 14 feet before the interior side of the wall and the physical units. The 10 feet currently allowed as setback before the parking stalls on the west side of the property will place cars, people, headlights, noise, exhaust, trash, et cetera, only 24 feet from everyone's front door and master bedrooms. This will adversely affect our property value and our quiet enjoyment of our property, increasing the west side setback to the same as the south side of the property, 21 feet, though not as far as we would like, would be an acceptable compromise and would be consistent with the precedent that is in place. The plans also show plantings of trees that would obstruct our views of the mountains. These views were a consideration in the purchase of these units. Any trees planted near the wall should be planted in the shadow of existing trees on our property side so as not to obscure the view any further. And these, as well as other trees planted throughout the lot, should not be able to grow to a height that would further obstruct our views. Also, bushes perhaps with some sort of thorn planted against the wall would help to discourage curious or more sinister attempts to scale the wall by uninvited intruders. Number three, the wall on the west side of our property is stepped down toward the south side, rising again at the extreme south corner. The grading of that side of the proposed parking lot should be able to keep the wall at a consistent height, not to dip below six feet on the parking lot side. We believe that these changes to the plans would help to maintain the good neighbor policy which we feel we have with the convention center around the city of Palm Springs. Sincerely, Barbara Oral, who is our association president.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Batterson, is that it?
Bassensen.
Bassensen?
Yes.
Okay, would you sign the clipboard then before you go? Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Frank Tyson, 175 South Kwia. I also would like to speak about the casino parking lots. I understand you're only dealing with one today. I am somewhat puzzled why these applications are coming in so close to opening the casino, why I wasn't thought-giving to this before. Secondly, I, why didn't the tribe, and the city for that matter, engage the public in the planning process in search for alternatives? We do have an Office of Neighborhood Involvement which has a policy of having neighborhood meetings. You have neighborhood meetings on all kinds of issues, from Jack-in-the-Box to Kentucky Fight, and the lots, the parking lots, are certainly going to have a major impact on the community, so it should involve the public. Besides the lack of neighborhood involvement, also, I don't believe that EIR has been doing this entire process of these various parking lots, of its, there's six or seven, it's kind of hard to get the proper information on this. Some issues I want to quickly bring out is, first of all, how do they fit into the general plan? Most areas actually were zoned residential, and one specifically, the Perry Schooner site, was set aside for hotel development. Two, are, these lots are going to be operated 24 hours a day and are surrounded by homes and condominiums in an area that's been traditionally quite pristine, so we need to really address the traffic, 24-hour traffic and noise issue. Three, do they conform with the city's landscape requirements, providing much-needed shade and abatement of heat absorption and heat retention? In going over these plans, and a lot of them just became available at the last minute, I noticed that the Plaza Parking Lot, which is on each side of Andreas, is virtually devoid of any landscaping. What about the dark sky ordinance? One lot built recently across from the lovely Doeville condos is actually tastefully done and nicely lit, but it's a little too much lit for that general residential area. I think the casino has a challenge of trying to fit in into the resident neighborhood in which they chose to locate itself. The overall concern was then, how does all this fit in in the urban fabric of Palm Springs, of a low-key resort, which is, it's very important to preserve the atmosphere? I noticed one lot that I think is a lot is wedged in between some single-family homes, but I'm not even quite sure about that. So I'd recommend to the commission that we try to follow the procedures of the EIR, we try to follow the procedures of the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, and try to get some, maybe, neighborhood meetings going, to come up with, to assist the commission and the tribe with coming up with a plan that is going to fit into our community and not degrade our community, but upgrade our community, because once those lots are there, they're going to be there for a long time. So I would like to see you maybe go in slow haste on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tyson.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission? If not, we'll close the public comments, and we, our public hearings don't begin until 2:00, so we'll move on to other items on the agenda. The next item on the agenda that's not a public hearing is case number 5.0667. Should we take that, Mr. Evans? Are we ready for that?
Yes, sir.
Case number 5.0667, request by the Awa Kaliente Band of Kwia Indians for a planning commission review of parking lot plans for the Spa Resort Casino located at 400 North Indian Drive, Indian Canyon Drive, C2 Zone Section 14. Is there a staff report on that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to give you a brief introduction, and then Larry Menez, principal planner, will give you an overview of the actual proposed parking lot. This parking lot located at 400 North Indian Canyon Drive is located in a C2 zone. That's what the property on the east side of Indian Canyon Drive is zoned. A permitted use by right-of-zone, subject to architectural approval, is a freestanding parking lot. This parking lot is not freestanding. It's intended to serve the Spa Casino, but it is not on the exact same site. It's across the street and diagonal from the actual casino site. So from a zoning standpoint, this is a by right-of-zone parking lot. It's a very small parking lot. This particular parking lot is located on tribal trust land, which means the tribal council and their planning and development process has the exclusive permitting rights for this property pursuant to our cooperative processing agreement with the tribe. The two planning directors have agreed that this is a relatively minor project. It's a very small parking lot, as you'll see. It's allowable by right-of-zone, so we determined that it was not a project that needed to go through the full conformity report process and meetings between both the city council and the tribal council. This is different than most properties that people are familiar with that are considered Indian land. Tribal trust is the same type of land ownership and stewardship that the casino and the Spa Hotel are on. Allotted or leased land that's not tribal trust is subject to the traditional city permitting process. So we have an agreement with the tribe, to sum that up, that allows for an informal, fairly quick review, and because this is a land use that's allowable by right-of-zone, in theory, a business across the street, Palm Springs Life Magazine could propose a parking lot across the street by right-of-zone in that particular location, we would look at it in a very similar fashion. So that's how this comes before you. Larry Menez will give you an overview of the parking lot, and, you know, we're going to address the parking lot lighting, some of the landscaping, and some of the dimensions on the proposed parking lot.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As Doug alluded to, this is, this is part of a review in accordance with the agreement with the tribe. I have a couple exhibits here. This is the actual site. It's going to be 166 parking stalls. This exhibit below here shows how that will fit in into a future plan. So essentially, what you're seeing is one-third of this property that will eventually be built out, and that will have to go through an environmental review. There's a whole lease and detailed process for that. Today, the tribe is asking for you to look at this site. They're proposing some jack-around-a-trees. Staff is recommending that they substitute those trees out because they're, although they're a really nice tree, they tend to be a little bit problematic for parking lots in terms of mess and so on. So the tribe has agreed to replace those. We're also going to be looking at lighting standards, the heights, as well as the photometrics. We're going to want them to be compatible with three foot candles or less on average, compatible with the Convention Center parking lot. And that concludes the overview. If there's any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just on a foot candle basis, the tribe traditionally likes to push the average up a little bit above four for casino-related parking lots, just because of the nature of that type of use and what the industry standard is for that type of land use. Typically, in city parking lots, we try to push it to, if it's not an actively-used parking lot, the ordinance encourages one-foot candle on average. You know, I can read a newspaper with one-foot candle quite easily, so it's a well-lit parking lot, but it might not be as thoroughly lit. The ordinance allows up to three-foot candles, so what we recommended is that it be no more than three. The commission could certainly encourage the tribe to lower that down to a lesser value. You know, the type of lighting program that they have there is essentially about twice what we have proposed at the Convention Center.
I have a question, Larry. Can you, what are the properties that are on either side of this? I'm having a little trouble locating it.
Perhaps this area will, will help a little bit. Amato is the nearest southerly street, and I believe there's a gas station on that corner, and then Indian Canyon goes up on the, on the west side. And just north of the gas station is a vacant lot, and then transitions into that subject site, so...
Right, the old Christmas tree lot.
That's correct.
Any, any other questions for staff? I assume there's no one here to speak particularly on this matter? Okay, any other comments, or are we ready for some action?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval of case 5.0667.
I'll second, but with the addition of a recommendation of the tribe to consider reducing the, the foot candles to one in that range rather than the three that we're looking at.
Those were the three things I was about to say.
Oh, I thought you were done.
The lighting shall not exceed three-foot candles, remove the jack-around-a-trees, and substitute the alternate shade, and the parking lot dimensions comply with the zoning code 9.3.0600.
I agree. Do, Mr. Matthews, do you accept the recommendation of the second, that the light intensity be confined to one-foot candle? Or are you saying that it be below three?
Actually, that it not exceed three, you know, have you had the Ralph Ram?
Oh, yeah, I have. I would say aim for one, you know, with no higher than three.
It's really the consistency of the lighting. You can get by with a lot less light, and if they just properly design it, they shouldn't have any problem.
Are we going to include the motion, then, that we, that it be less than three and as close to one as, that is feasible?
I just left it at not exceed three. Is that acceptable?
Is that acceptable, the second?
I think...
Do you know the difference between one and three?
Absolutely, absolutely. I would prefer to leave it where we would prefer it less than three, as close to one as possible.
That's what suggests the language.
So would that be a suggestion?
Yeah.
Well, let's suggest it.
That's acceptable.
We have it moved in second.
Less than three, as close to one as possible.
That's better, thank you.
Okay. Now, we have that sorted out, I think. Everybody understand the motion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It'll pass unanimously, then five to zero. Mr. Evans?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to give you an update. At your last meeting, you did consider and review a temporary parking lot which was located on South Caye El Segundo, near, or, excuse me, Ramon Road. You can tell I've been on vacation. My map isn't working right. After considering and reviewing the need for that parking lot relative to what the tribe can use as far as parking immediately around the casino, they've informed the city, they've abandoned the plans for that temporary parking lot. So a lot of the controversy that you had at your last meeting was over that particular parking lot, and they've chosen to not move forward with that at this time or any time in the near future.
Well, that's terrific news. I think we're all happy to hear that. I was, I was by there a couple of times in the last week looking at that site, again, with a parking lot in mind, and I'm just delighted to hear it's not going to be there. Maybe you can express our appreciation to the tribe for their thoughtfulness in that regard, and I think this is really a good thing and a step in the right direction. Next item.
Mr. Chairman, since we're, we're not going to discuss number eight, if maybe we could squeeze in number nine?
And let's, let's do that now before we start our public hearings. Item nine is a sign program, an application by Dennis Mario for an amendment to an existing sign program at 180 Luring Drive, Zone P, Section 13. A staff report?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Let me pull it out. This is an amendment to an existing sign program at 180 Luring Drive. The existing sign program was brought to planning commission back in 1979, so it is kind of old. What's out there right now, there are no signs except for this banner that they have up, but that's not a real sign. What they plan on doing is naming the building, and the name is Alvara J. De Gustino Professional Building, and that's what they plan on naming it. What you see there is, they planned on also putting tenant names on the building, and we took it up to design review, and design review recommended that they just put the names of the tenants on the windows. But that's in our, on our sign program, and so we got revision. This is what they plan on doing, putting the name on the window per the convenience sign code. What else? Oh, yeah, another thing that design review recommended was the use of the material for the lettering. The lettering's not going to be lit, it's just going to be a metal letter, and this is what they're going to be using.
The lettering that you're showing us here would be for, for this part of the sign here?
Yes.
And there would be no, then, no tenant signs except for lettering on the windows?
Correct. That is correct. And that ends my presentation. Thank you.
Any questions of staff?
I have a quick one. It seems to me that this now complies with our sign ordinance. Why is it here?
Because they have a current sign program, and they're amending the original.
Okay. Any other questions? Any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval as submitted of the sign program at 180 Luring Drive.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Pass unanimously. It's 2:00, so we can move back to our public hearing items, and we'll call item number Tentative track map 31495, case number 3.2378, application by Amato Hermosa LLC for Glorieta Investments for a tentative track map and architectural approval to construct 84 condominium units on 8.8 acres of property located at the northeast corner of Amato Road and Hermosa Drive, R4 Zone, Section 14. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman and respected members of the commission, as you introduced this project, it is an 84 condominium unit project with on and off-site improvements on 8.86 acres approximately, with R4 zoning designation which represents a large-scale hotel and multifamily residential. The, the project, I realize this is small, but hopefully you get an idea. It's west of Sunrise, just one block in on the northeast corner of Amato Hermosa. To the north, we have another condominium project by the name of Greenhouse East Condos. They're a single-story, and they're in an RGA8 zoning designation. To the west, we have another condo project by the name of Casa Verde Condos. That's an R4 zoning designation, the same as, as this development proposal. They're a two-story project. To the south, we have Palm Regency Condos, RGA8 zoning, single-story. And obviously, here, we have a vacant lot. To the east, and there's a very small parking lot on the north and west corners, Sunrise and Amato, but we have the vacant land separating the, our project and that parking lot. This is a right-by-zone project, which represents that it must meet all the R4 zone property development standards. So consequently, I'll go through those quickly. We have a density, R4 allows 30 density units per acre, and our project comes up with a 9.4 density units per acre. This, I wanted to make a note before I proceed, that this project is in Section 14, so it was reviewed by the Awa Kaliente Band of Kwia Indians planning staff, and we've been in communication in regards to, to this project. This also complies with Section 14 in regards to density, the Section 14 master plan. The height is 30 feet for these, these units. That's the maximum allowed in the R4 zoning designation, and also complies with the Section 14 master plan height limitation. The project will be gated and walled. It has an entry here on Hermosa, the main entry. There is going to be an entry for emergency vehicles only on Amato for fire, and that will also provide, though, an exit only for the residents. There is an interior street... There is an interior street that will be privately maintained with the covenants and restrictions associated with the project. It's a twenty-eight-foot-wide interior street. I want to describe the units briefly. There's two different unit sizes. We have a six-unit complex and a three-unit. So here we are, six and the three. There are going to be five, six-unit buildings, and there's going to be eighteen three-unit buildings. These are designed in a fashion with, if we want to call it a townhouse, a lower upper level. I don't have a floor plan here to show you. When I have two of the three units, and then one will actually be over the garage aspect. So we're, that's how we're, and then, of course, basically, we're taking the three unit and just doubling them up here for the six. The square footage for the three is four thousand four hundred ninety-one square feet of living space all total, with one thousand three hundred and seventy-four square feet of garage space. Each one of these units will have an enclosed two-car garage per unit. Then the six-unit building is eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-two square feet with two thousand seven hundred and forty-eight square feet of garage. As you can see, the architectural style is Mediterranean, some really nice detailing here in regards to shutters, wrought iron, et cetera. This was very well received by Design Review Committee and was approved without any reservation or conditions. The landscape element of this project has required some review with the tribal planning staff. Our engineering staff is requiring a forty-foot right-of-way on Amado, which would be consistent with the build-out that's over here right off of Sunrise, and so that will, we have right now a little bit of a jut of land there, but they're going to require the dedication of the full right-of-way, and then thirty-foot right-of-way on Hermosa. Staff is proposing to change Exhibit A at your, of course, approval. The conditions are addressing now, the COAs are addressing an engineering condition of approval for the Amado Road on number seven. They, we're requesting to change that condition to reconstruct a five-foot-wide sidewalk separated from the curb by a four-foot-wide planting area along the entire frontage. This came about as a compromise. We had initially requested an eight-foot adjacent to curb sidewalk. Tribal Planning, Section fourteen, has a four and four, four-foot-wide median, four-foot sidewalk. We would like to stay with our five-foot minimum city standard that we typically require, and so we compromised with the four-foot wide plant, pardon me, planting medium and the five-foot-wide sidewalk, and that's in agreement with both planning staff of the tribe and the city. Consequently, because of that request, the way that the track map is designed, we had to include another engineering condition. So that would add a condition to read dedicate a one-foot sidewalk easement behind the sidewalk in Landscape Lot D along the entire Amado Road frontage. The way that the track map is designed, they've actually had a landscaped lot adjacent to that sidewalk after their right-of-way. That, it was ten feet wide, it's not uncommon. We're just asking to have an easement then of a foot into that landscape lot to be able to construct that five-foot-wide sidewalk. It's kind of a matter of numbers there. Hermosa is proposed with an eight-foot-wide sidewalk adjacent to curb, and it will match the existing for the complex to the north. The applicant is also proposing a substantial change to the landscape. This plan wasn't reviewed at Design Review. It went to Design Review, there wasn't a landscape architect present, so the applicant asked for it to be reviewed at a later date. They'd like to change this, and city staff also supports his proposal to move into a desertscape, not so much grass. So staff is requesting approval to review the preliminary landscape plan in order to incorporate those proposed changes and to allow Design Review, Design Review Committee review. I have had some public comments in regards to this project. There have been four people that have actually come into city, city planning office and wanted to see the plans. After they did review the plans, they were satisfied. Some of their concerns, of course, has been view corridors, heights adjacent to their project. The applicant did provide a sight line north of this project, in the Greenhouse project, there are carports that actually are the first structure on their project. And so the applicant did a line of sight for a view of a person was standing outside, what would be people seeing, you know, over the trees through, and basically, they, we came to the conclusion that there wouldn't be an impact to the actual living structures on the adjacent site. When this was pointed out to the adjacent property owners that were inquiring, they were satisfied and expressed support for this project. There's also been inquiries in regards to parking. This has a lot of parking, actually. Each unit has two indoor parking spaces, and because of the length or depth of the drive, also have two exterior parking spaces that they could have guests parking in their driveway, just as most single-family homes would. There's only nine actual guest parking or adjacent to the amenities parking areas, spaces, but the parking table kind of skewed that, looking like there was a tremendous amount of guests parking. So I had calls on that, and once they were realizing how it was actually depicted on site, I didn't have anyone express concerns after that. That concludes my report, and I will take any questions.
Thank you for the report. Any questions of staff?
A question on access for fire trucks, as we've gone into this before. It's twenty, you said twenty feet at the beginning of the presentation. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Seems like we've gone through this before, twenty feet isn't enough for the fire department because of parking.
You mean the driveway width, the interior street width is twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, okay.
And, yes, that's acceptable. There really won't be on-street parking there because of the, there's so much driveway space for guest parking, et cetera, so we, fire didn't seem to have a concern with that. Thank you for asking.
Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Anyone here wishing to speak on this particular item? Now, do, just so we're, we understand, the motion, if there is one, you're looking for a modification of Condition number seven, is that correct?
That's correct.
You want that included in the motion?
Yes.
That the Condition number seven be modified to include a four-foot planting median and a five-foot sidewalk? And a, is that correct?
It's a four-foot planting median and a five-foot sidewalk.
Okay. Mr. Matthews thinks he has a motion.
You've opened and closed the public hearing.
It's not, oh.
That's right. Go on, thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? It's a public hearing item.
Hi, I'm Dennis Freeman, representing the Development. The only one comment I would make is that I believe there's a mistake on the total acreage. I believe it's nine-point-eight instead of eight-point-eight, at least to my best knowledge. I don't know if that was a mistake in the report or not.
Even better.
Did you check it? Okay, everything I've seen says nine-point-eight, but it doesn't matter, we're still within densities. If anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Anyone else? If not, then we'll close the public hearing and return to the Commission for any action on the item.
Mr. Chairman, hearing not eyed, move approval of tentative track map three-point, three-one-four-nine-five, case three-point-two-three-seven-eight. Subject to the conditions in the staff report with two revisions, we revise engineering Condition number seven on Amado Road to construct a five-foot-wide sidewalk separated from the curb by a four-foot-wide planting area along the entire frontage, and add Condition seven-A to dedicate a one-foot-wide sidewalk easement behind the sidewalk in the landscape of Lot D along the entire Amado frontage.
And also, you're including in the motion that the approval be, would be subject to staff review and design review of the final landscape plan?
Yes, and the final landscape, Ken, which I guess we're headed towards a more arid or zeroscape-type plan.
Which I'm sure Design Review will be quite happy with.
I'll second.
Any further comment? Michelle, we need a roll call vote.
Mr. Hook, Nadel?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Sean Berger?
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. That takes us to item number four, case five-point-zero-eight-seven-zero, dash PD, dash two-six-eight. Application by Ernest G. Noya for an amendment to the Plan Development, for an amendment to Plan Development District number two-six-eight for the Indian Oasis Resort relative to Project Phasing for tentative parcel map three-one-three-five-one to subdivide a seventeen-point-one-five acre parcel into ten parcels, to approve final development plans for parcel one-A development, and to approve a seventy-one-thousand-two-hundred-square-foot commercial office building located at the southwest corner of Mesquite Avenue and Crosley Road, Zone WM-one-one-L and M-one-one-L, Section twenty. That's Zone WM-one-I-L and Zone M-one-I-L, Section twenty. E. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The item before you was originally approved as a Plan Development District on July fifth, two thousand and one. It's pretty complex, PD, it included a general plan amendment, changing some things on the general plan circulation map, creating some new policies, summarizing some land uses, as well as adding some information to some of the tables in the general plan. I'm not going to go into those right now, but they're in your report. If you have any questions, I'll answer them as we move through the presentation. Project approvals included a preliminary Plan Development District, essentially the land plan for a five-hundred-room hotel, two-hundred-vacation or timeshare units, half a million square feet of business, office, park, and commercial uses, as well as an eighteen-hole golf course on approximately two-hundred-and-seventy-three acres. The site is, overall, is irregularly shaped and bounded by the Palm Springs Marketplace on the north, unimproved land, I'm sorry, Palm Springs Marketplace to the north, Simran Golf Course also to the north, unimproved land, the east bank of the Whitewater River to the east, as well as Cathedral Canyon Country, Cathedral Canyon Country and Golf Club to the east, Talkwoods Creek Golf Course, the fairways and fairways, east condominiums to the south, unimproved land and industrial subdivision, and the extension of San Luis Rey Road to the west. Site is generally flat, sloping about two degrees. Elevations range from about three-hundred-and-thirty to three-hundred-and-seventy feet above sea level. The site is what we call Sonoran Desert Scrub environment. Today, we're looking at specific entitlements and modifications to the Plan Development District located on the southwest corner of Mesquite Avenue and Crosley Road. Specifically, there's a couple of items that we're looking at: revision to Project Phasing, tentative parcel map, and an architectural review. And I'll kind of walk you through those items. As originally envisioned, the project was thought of as occurring in three phases. Phases can shift as market demands change. However, the first phase of the project was to be the construction of the golf course. There was a pretty strong desire at Planning Commission and Council to have the golf course happen and have it happen first. Second phase would be the construction of the commercial office and business park elements, and third phase was the resort, hotel, and vacation units. And there was no prioritization of the second and third phase in terms of the order of their occurrence. The applicant seeks to modify Condition ten through the creation of a sub-phase that would allow a portion of building construction prior to golf course construction, and staff supports that at this time. And I'll get into that a little more when we talk about the building. Also anticipated as part of the original approvals was tentative parcel maps and tentative track maps. Today, we have a parcel map, three-one-three-five-one, which would subdivide about seventeen acres into ten parcels. There's a twenty-three-acre portion designated on the map as not a, not a part, and it's intended that that area would be reserved for future golf course uses. In terms of the architectural review and the specific building plans, I'll walk you through those. I just want to point out a little summary information. In analyzing the building, we looked at a seventy-one-thousand-square-foot building. However, in our haste, we missed a portion of it. It's actually forty-five-thousand-square-foot of office and a subterranean parking floor which is not office space. So the parking calculation in your report is incorrect, and as proposed, the building does comply with parking supply. So there is no shortage. We're going to ask you to eliminate Conditions eight and ten, and note that the CC and ARS in Condition twenty-three will require a shared parking agreement, which is redundant with Condition ten, and I'll walk you through those in a minute. As proposed, the project would provide a hundred-and-ninety-five parking spaces as part of the first phase of construction of the building. It is overparked by four spaces, a hundred-and-ninety-one spaces would be required by code, so therefore it meets code. In terms of the building, design, and development, the M-one zone development standards, as well as discussed in the original PD, require that any building thirty feet in height or more would have a one-to-one setback. So we have included a condition that would require the building to be moved to the east ten feet, because as proposed, there is a twenty-foot setback on the west side, and I'll walk you through that as well. Landscape plan has been prepared, and you'll get to take a look at that. Requires a minimum of fifty percent landscaping at maturity of the plant material. Again, this project does comply with General Plan objectives three-point-thirty and a number of policies as well. There's a specific General Plan policy in regards to this project, which will come before you in the coming months with a amendment to the General Plan policy, changing the name and some of the standards. But there is a specific policy that allows this entire project. Again, the site is zoned M-one-I-L, Indian Land and Water Course, M-one-I-L, and a mitigated negative declaration was adopted by the Council, July fifth, so the environmental documents have been completed. At this point, it's a minor revision to the PD. We did notice property owners within four hundred feet of the site, and what I'd like to do now is approach the boards, walk you through the design of the project, then I'll come back and talk to you about some of the conditions that the applicant has questions For orientation purposes, we have Ramon Road, Mesquite, where it becomes the Mid Valley Parkway, and Crosley. This site plan and perspective drawing depict the original approvals from two thousand and one, as well as the extension that was granted by Planning Commission on June of the, in June of this year. As originally intended, the project included, as you can see, golf kind of surrounding the uses. Storm drain, the Whitewater storm channel here, hotel in this area, commercial here and here, commercial here in these areas, number of water features. and here, commercial here in these areas, number of water features, and some timeshare units as well, additional recreation, tennis, and those types of uses here. Today, as part of our project, we are looking only at this location. This is tentative map 31351. It fronts on the southeast corner of the intersection, I'm sorry, southwest corner of Crosley Road and Mesquite Avenue. We have the not apart parcel, which is the location of the golf course. Now, as you can see, they've pulled the golf course away from Mesquite and stretched the commercial in this area all along the Mesquite frontage. That's one of the amendments or specifications that's occurring as part of this map today. This drawing shows their intent, which shows a whole number six, seven, and eight of the golf course, some water features, and then the building that we're looking at today. The building that we're looking at today is located right here. I did mention the 20-foot setback that's shown on the west side in our condition that we've included to have a 30-foot side yard setback, essentially one-to-one per the M1 zone code requirements. What I'd like to do is walk you through the architecture, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time regarding the site and layout.
Alex, what is on this side of the property?
To the direct west is the DWA headquarters site, and one of the conditions would be that the site would actually share an access road, which is to the south of San Luis Rey, with DWA. You may recall that DWA actually has a driveway right on their property line. The architecture is, you know, traditional office park, but there's some unique features to it. You would expect to see the glass and the spandrels, but you really don't often see the stone. It's intended by the architectural team to provide for a unique design and really establish a strong presence in this commercial business office park. Again, the landscape plan here, fairly standard. This has all been reviewed by the Design Review Committee. The Design Review Committee had minor recommendations. The applicant has changed the building and made the modifications, refining the image of this kind of central core here to the satisfaction of the Design Review Committee. We have a recommendation for approval of the entire project, architecture, revisions, landscape plan, and tentative map. What I'd like to do is kind of stop here and see if you have any questions, and then A representative of the development team is present and would probably like to discuss the conditions, but I'd like to kind of give you my understanding of what they're looking for at this time, and they'd be happy to chime in as well. Before you, we have provided a legislative draft of the conditions of approval, so I'd call your attention to the first page of that. There was kind of a complex series of actions that happened here. We took the approved, earlier conditions of approval from the Plan Development District and added or modified them in accordance with our current standards and principles. There have been a couple of new conditions that have been added at the direction of the city attorney to the planning department's general conditions, and some things have changed, so I'll kind of walk you through them. In terms of the first two conditions, there's really no concern. The third condition is actually in bold on your legislative draft. You'll note that this is a general property maintenance condition that is new, that has been inserted at the direction of the city attorney. So, it's something that the attorney has directed us to do in terms of ensuring property maintenance throughout the city on future development. Condition four, five, six, and seven are all previous. The applicant is asking for deletion of eight. We say delete eight because we were mistaken that there was an inadequate supply of parking. Parking supply is met on site, so eight can be deleted. Number nine, the applicant is requesting deletion of, he would like all references at this point to phasing eliminated. However, staff is not comfortable eliminating references to phasing. We would like to ensure that the golf course is still part of Phase 1 of the project. So, we're going to ask you to leave number nine alone. Ten, I mentioned earlier, would also be eliminated. It's redundant with condition eight, which we've asked you to eliminate, as well as 23. Number 11, we've added subject to Indian landowner rights, if any. That's consistent with the earlier condition of approval, which was 14 on the original conditions. I'm not going to tell you which reference condition they were. That will confuse you, but it is, that makes it consistent with the earlier condition. In terms of condition 15, that's a new condition. This talks about minimum landscape area. The applicant's asked us to eliminate it. However, we think it's important to have it in there. It is a code provision, and we'd be concerned that in the future, that it could be overlooked if it's not specifically called out as a condition. There's different philosophies, and we hate to, I'll kind of jump in right here in the middle. We hate to have a large number of conditions, but by the same token, we feel that even though many of these are standard code provisions, it's helpful in the plan check process and as a reminder to the developer to have the conditions specifically called out. So, we'll talk about a couple more of them, and then we'll invite the applicant up to speak. 16 through 22, the applicant didn't have a problem with, although 17, we're adding that same phrase, subject to the Indian landowners' rights, if any. That's a protection that the applicant's seeking for his clients, and it was originally the language in the original PD. We have no problem adding that, and it's in bold before you. Number 23, we're identifying as a new condition. However, CC and Rs do need to have a provision for shared parking, because as you can see, the parking is rather large, and one of the parcels that would be created, I think it's parcel number four, is actually a landlocked parcel and would need access. Number 25, number 24 is, they have no problem with. Number 25, they're asking to delete. This is the one-to-one setback that I've mentioned as a provision of the M1 zoning code for buildings over 30 feet, and staff contends that that condition should remain. Number 26 through 36, the development team has no problem with, so we can move through that page. Number 37 through 45, the development team didn't have a problem with, so we can leave Number 49 is a new condition. The spell check put in Crasly Road, it's Crosley Road, we apologize for that. We're asking for bicycle trails along Mesquite and Crosley Roads. We want it called out here. It is a requirement of the general plan, but again, we feel that it does need to be called out specifically, just to let the applicant know and establish that it is a requirement of the project. And then on 51, we've added for tentative parcel map that the bike paths would be on the south side of Mesquite and west side of Crosley. 52, we're identifying, that bold identifies the previous conditions that would provide for school fee payments, subject to any credits for BIA fees that have been paid to the Unified With that said, we will conclude our presentation. There will be some discussion in terms of the engineering conditions as well. I'm not the person that needs to do that. The development team may want to jump in and talk about some of the conditions we've previously gone over. So, this concludes staff's presentation. Thank you very much.
Any other questions of staff, or any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Yes?
I have a question. Under entry that they're sharing with DWA, is there a turnout in the center medium? So, if they're heading west, they could...
That's the location of an intersection with San Luis Rey.
Okay.
You'd like me to point it out for you?
No, that's fine.
Any questions? If not, we'll go ahead and then open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Limit your comments, please, to three minutes. Give us your name and address, and sign the clipboard before you leave.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have at least as much time as Alex did. We may have to continue this item. I'm sorry to say that we're a little disturbed at the nature of the conditions of approval on this project. We went through, two years ago, a full public hearing on this project. We went through a, an extension of this project about two months ago, and these conditions reference all sorts of things that are new, that are inconsistent with the existing development conditions, and I'm passing those out to you. What we're passing out to you are the city council-approved conditions of approval, and all we're asking basically is a direction that the existing conditions of approval be used as the base for this project, and that when we look at an architectural element that might have, for instance, we're now sharing a driveway with DWA, that's new. Before, we had the golf course all the way over to that side, and we couldn't do that. With our traffic engineer saying we can share that signal, we can do this, we can improve the, you know, the way things are going, the way the project moved, obviously, that would be a new condition. We would accept that. Architecturally, if there was something that said that this building needed to do this, then in fact, we would want to do that. And while I appreciate the effort that some of this went through, you know, we get, if you tried to follow between those conditions and the one we got, we've spent hours going between this ordinance and that ordinance, or this condition and that. Number 83 was E18, and we're going back and forth trying to figure these things out. To try to get as specific as possible, we would like all just regurgitation conditions that say this is an ordinance, follow it, to be taken out. That included number three. Granted, the city attorney may want to see that. We have a blanket development that we're trying to move through. Now, granted, we're asking for some things. We're asking for a map to do pretty much what we said we were going to do, and we're asking for a change of the phasing, and those issues should be on here, they should be discussed, and that's what we're talking about. But we should not be talking about bike paths, conditions that are different than the original approval. We should not be talking about improvement plans that are different than the approval, and we shouldn't be talking about fees that are different than the approval. There is nothing in this application that is setting that forth. I think I'd like to jump to probably the most egregious of these, which is, and I have not got an answer yet of why this came up, but in the...
79.
79? There's some misnumbering and those kinds of things. On item 79, on the new conditions, "The developer shall pay a fair share reimbursement at City of Palm Springs for the construction of street improvements related to Mid Valley Parkway. The reimbursement shall be an amount established by SEVAG in City of Palm Springs. Payment shall be made in accordance with the terms of such agreement." I mean, this is the type of thing that should not be on here. This is not, this is not a new project. This is not something that we're, you know, just coming down the line with. There's rewording of many of these that are, you know, some have been changed with the, you know, as we talked about, as Alex talked about, but, you know, we just can't live with that. We think that it's very difficult, it's certainly difficult for the applicant, I know it must be difficult for the Planning Commission, to sit there and say, look at 125 conditions, and, you know, and then say, you know, you've got three minutes to go through these. We've got, we've probably got 20 that we would like deleted, or at least rewarded, to be consistent with the approved original. And, you know, I think at this point, while we would not like to, I think if the Planning Commission would want to spend time on each and every one of these, that's one thing, but we just think we'd like the direction from the commission, that the staff use the original base document, and add those conditions that are specific to the application in front of you, and delete changes that have nothing to do with the application in front, and not change the basic conditions of approval of this project, unless they relate to the request that's at hand. Granted, we're asking that the golf course not be mentioned as a Phase 1A or Phase 1B. At this point, we have asked that that be deleted. However, as you look at the map, we're obviously not, we're subdividing it to create the golf course parcel. There's a condition that we can't have parcel four, which is a landlocked parcel. This is a typical shopping center type of parcel map that allows for that to be a parking lot parcel per the approved plan with reciprocal access between the two. This is real typical. You know, you think we're creating something, you know, very obtuse here, and we're just, we're very frustrated that the changes are coming, and they're coming, and they're disorganized. They're not, you know, they're not following a sequence that you could look and say, here they are, here's the new project, when we come back in with the second phase, here's the next piece, so that, I mean, every time we come in with 125 new conditions and say, we've got six that are changing, we don't think it's a good use of everybody's time to do that. We'd like to answer the questions, but at this point, we think that the only thing that we have, you know, we can work on today is to continue this, so that, you know, we can come back, but we would like the direction from the commission to the staff to work with us in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Ruse. Anyone else care to speak on this item?
I'm Bob Minero, Minero Smith &amp; Associates. It's always been our intention to have multiple final maps that would be associated with this parcel map. The first final parcel map being the parcel number one, which relates to the building that's before you. And so, basically, what we're saying is that we don't see the need to improve Crosley Road when all we're doing is placing a building on Mesquite. The improvements for Crosley Road should be tied to, at some point, in the balance of the development of the site, not just that first building. And we'd like some direction on that. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak on this item?
My name is Ernest Noy. I'm the applicant. I had three pages of notes, I'd just like to go through them, I should get it done in three minutes, but I'd rather not rush. When we were originally here, let's talk about phasing first. When we were originally here two years ago, I had somebody under contract to build, his criteria, his one condition to me was do the golf course first. When somebody at the Planning Commission, I think it was Mark, actually, he was the chairman, brought up, well, you know, we should have the golf course in Phase 1, they added that. Before that was added, it said on the bottom, it said on the top, "Planning Commission can phase this as they see appropriate and pay the infrastructure accordingly." So, that's how it started. So, I went along with the golf, because it didn't matter. However, the guy that had the options is no longer around, so now, I got to do it. Now, what I know the best is office buildings, I need to prime the pump, get these entitlements vested, so I'm going to do the office building. And that was the idea. However, I can't be committed to phase anything. I shouldn't be committed. You guys can decide whatever you want. Bottom line is, I have a mixed-use development, complex, has serves many purposes to the city, and, you know, I'm not going to just jump through all these damn hoops to make you guys happy with the phasing is, because I can't do it. I have to do what I can finance. I want the golf course. I'm not going to be able to sell many office buildings without the golf course, but you start telling me what to do, then you're putting handcuffs on me. So, you know, I ask to just forget all that, give me the phasing we need. I need the flexibility. I need the flexibility. For your own information, the plan is to try to build the first nine holes. If you leave the golf course, you're going to say, "That's not the full golf course." So then I'm back here again, and I'm going through this again. So I don't want to do that. I've got a letter in to John Raymond, we've had discussions, I'm going to try to build the golf course, let the city use it out of there, out of the thirty-six holes, so that we can prime the pump and they can service it out of there. But that's not neither here nor there. Let me do that. That's not... I don't think that's a criteria should have. So that's one thing. The second thing is the procedure, okay? When I came in for the PDD, and this is all new to me, so I came in here and I went along, and I worked very hard on the language for a reason, because this project has significance in many areas for this city. First is it creates a true corporate park, and with our growth fact that we could draw the big guys in. That's why it looks like an office building. It's why it's not Spanish, because I want the corporate guys. I'm going to go after them, it's my responsibility. Second thing it does is creates an energy park across the street. The old Knutson track that's been vacant all these years, I'm finally going to get that leaf through. It's an energy park, which means that we could draw industry, light industry everybody talks about. So here's the opportunity to do it, because we got the way to do it, because I already have some tenants to do it. And we get the destination resort. Now, this ain't easy, okay? So I don't need any more obstacles than I already have. Not only that, this is the model for the future landowners. That's why I spent so much time on the original conditions. And staff, we worked that out, and that's why there's all those conditions in there, and we worked every comma in there. And that was the idea. Everything I do possibly sets a precedent for the Indian landowner. This is an application from the Indian landowners and my partnership. And in the future, these Indian landowners are going to come here to develop their own land, and I'm trying to give them a reason to come here. And I can tell you, as of today, I can't find a reason to come to the city and not go through the Indian planning. But that was my idea, that was my intent, and everybody knows that that was my intent. But I don't feel the same. Now, conditions of approval, I am not going to go into all these conditions of approval. Staff worked hard to get it done, you know, we're a little late, but that's not anyone's fault, that doesn't matter. However, it did point out, this system does not work on my project. I am too organized to let a bunch of haphazard language be put in and say, "Oh, it's the same." No, it's not the same. The condition is written in the PDD, that's the condition, exactly the way it's written, not a paraphrase of it. I've got to live with this for fifteen years, and you guys may not be there. So, no, we have to make it clear, and I think it shows that we have to do this differently than you're doing it. It's what Marvin said, we need to have a set of master conditions, and every time I bring a component in, whatever that component is, we add and subtract from that. Because we don't, if a guy comes in to develop the timeshare, I say, "Well, here's seventeen sets of conditions." Right now, I'm up to three hundred conditions, almost three hundred conditions. How am I going to do this? When I do add the timeshare, add the retail, by the time you're done, you've got a thousand conditions. I ain't doing it. It ain't going to happen that way. That's why you don't have to make any decision on the actual conditions, because forget it, it ain't happening. As far as I consider is that I... We have to be consistent, have a set, and be able to manage this. It's not manageable by you guys and me, and I'll tell you the truth, I'm not sure staff has the time, because they're shorthanded, to be able to handle this complex thing and say, draw new conditions each time. So what I'm saying is, the PDD's the base, from now on, we go off of that. As far as that condition seventy-nine, that's proverbial straw that broke the camel's back, especially since the city got Proposition 8 funds. I'm reimbursing them for money they didn't lay out. And with no cap, no formula, forget it. That's just one of many. So, I'm trying to get, I'm back in here to get a first-class hotel. I amended the EA, you're coming back with the PDD, the actual amendments to make this new site plan, which is not up there, which should be up there. They should see what the new site plan should be at some point. But in any case, at that point, to make a better project, I elected to go back in, do another EA, open myself up potentially to all these lawsuits and everything, to get the first-class hotel, the one that was designed that was first-class, had to go a hundred and thirty feet. Do I regret I did that? Absolutely, that was a mistake. But now I have to live with it. So I leave with this. I've got to get this, I started to try to get this project through, forget the office building, the whole thing. I tried to get this through by July. It was an unrealistic goal, okay? But I cannot get into serious negotiation with the hotel flag until I show them I've got the entitlements for what I've got the spreadsheets for, okay? That's what I'm rushing for. So what I say to you guys is, let's wrap this up with staff if we can, and let's bring it back, get that EA out, and let's try to get this thing moving. Now, if you want, what I'd like from you is anything that's obvious besides the conditions. You know, when you look at the design of the building, any comments you have, I'd like to have them, so that when we come back, we resolve them. If they could be resolved, let's resolve them. But I'm not going to go through these. He stopped at a point where they got worse. He stopped at seventy-nine, and from there on, I got a mark on every page. So, I mean, to be honest with you, I'm just frustrated. I mean, I'm at the point now where I got to fight for a stupid office building when I'm trying to do a $244 million project. With that, hey, do what you got to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noya. Anyone else care to speak on this matter? Mr. Noya, there may be some questions for you and your development team here when we get into the discussion. Anyone else care to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing and go back to commission now for questions and comments. And I have a... I'll open it up, and just to express my concern. Now, we saw this request, just with our packet that we got Friday and read it over the weekend. We... The commission has spent a lot of time on this project in past hearings and in study sessions. We've always looked at this project as one project. I think it's a great project. But I became concerned when I looked at this request to change the phasing and to build this office building first. I'm not sure that it's not okay, but I think the commission needs to understand that what's being asked for now is that, is for, as I understand it, that the applicant be given the right to build an office building and not required to build anything else. So I think we have to, as a commission, feel that an office building at this location of this style and size is a sensible thing for us to approve, assuming nothing else gets built. Now, I know that's not your intention, Mr. Noya, and not what you have in mind, but I think we have to look at this application in that fashion. And I really have not had a chance, I feel, to think about that in these terms, having all this time thought about this project as a whole, which would include a golf course, a hotel, residential units, office building, commercial, and so on, as a single integrated development, and not necessarily as an office building on, in this particular location on Mesquite, near Crosley. So just the concept of this rephasing causes me to want to think about this a little bit, and whether this is something that really makes sense, and if we're going to not require any phasing here so that things can be built whenever they can be built, then I'm not... I think I, at least from my point of view, I need to think about that a little bit, and whether that really makes good planning sense, that we get into that kind of a situation. So I would like to give a little more thought to what's being requested here, and maybe hear from the applicant on why it is that we are changing the phasing and putting the golf course now as a lower priority rather than the first priority, which I thought this project, the way this project was going to be built, that the golf course would be built first, that would then encourage the other aspects of the development. So I have that concern. As far as the conditions go, from my point of view, I don't think we can deal with these conditions this way. I mean, there's too many of them. I think what we need to do is to get the applicant to give us something in writing regarding the objections to the conditions, so that we can compare them and study them and have an opportunity to consider them. I mean, I can understand the applicant's frustration. A lot of time has been devoted, and a lot of money's been devoted, to this project. But on the other hand, we certainly want to give staff fair consideration of their concerns as well. So those are my comments.
Do you want me to address that right now?
Well, let's hear from the others, and then maybe we can have you come up and comment on, there may be some other comments that require or justify some response.
I have a slightly different take. I frankly thought we've had these great positive meetings on this particular project, and there've been some changes, and both here before the planning commission and the study session, and all was going pretty well. In fact, we were very flexible in the ownership structure. We, you know, it was going to be timeshare, vacation, fractional, whatever developed cash flow. I don't feel as strongly about the golf course and the order and the phasing. I mean, you know, what works economically works, and from a planning standpoint, whether there's an office building there and a golf course, you know, maybe one day this thing will be built, there'll be no golf course there. I mean, that's all based on the market. But something happened at this meeting that, I mean, this has always been kind of going along, and I think we've been about as flexible as we possibly could be, and all of a sudden it's like you're talking to your ex-wife's lawyer, and there's nothing but bad news.
It's our life, dude.
Yeah. And so somehow, you know, these conditions really need to be worked out a lot before they get here. I mean, if there's a tweak here and there, or whatever, that's something. But, you know, Marvin came up here and basically said wholesale, "Throw this thing out, it can't be done," and there've been changes in what's going on, and I'm, I don't know what the hell happened in two weeks or a month since our last meeting. I mean, we were all lovers, and this was great. And now, all of a sudden, because, you know, this is a big project, and it may not come out the way it was initially envisioned. And it has been two years since it was initially envisioned. And so I'm trying to figure out what happened. Go.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Evans.
Could I comment on a portion of what happened?
You certainly may.
We've been asked to reformat our conditions of approval to make them more user-friendly. And this project had the conditions reformatted the way we've been asked to reformat conditions. There would still be, at the end of the day, if you were to approve a set of conditions, one set of conditions that would cover the whole planned development district, that would cover the whole project, and it was intended that they would be the revised conditions that we handed out. What we did not do, and what I think strained relations, is these conditions were provided to the applicant on Friday. They then flipped out the originals, probably worked a few hours that are not traditional work hours, trying to compare them, and became very frustrated because they didn't match. The numbers didn't match, the conditions were moved around, some were adjusted, there were some added. The development committee did not talk to the applicant, like we should have, before we handed the applicant the conditions on a big project like this. That's our fault, and the development committee has to do a better job in communicating to applicants. And when we're going to throw surprising conditions or controversial conditions, whether they come from planning or engineering, that department should get out in front of that. And there's one in here that we didn't get out in front of, you know, having to do with the reimbursement agreement. And I'm being real candid with you. Don't like to do this in a public meeting. We should have done a better job, both from planning and engineering standpoint, to have those conversations. I think when we go through the conditions, there's going to be fewer that are completely new. There are some that were adjusted or refined, and we need to take a look and go through those with the applicant. And I think we can do that between now and the next meeting. It's going to take a focused meeting, where we put all the players in the room, we start on page one, and we work all the way through so that they understand. The city engineer probably needs to talk to the commission about number seventy-nine, about its history and where it came from, because I think that's the one that is completely new. The maintenance of the parkways and stuff like that, that's required by state law anyway. We do that anyway, and we just thought, a little over a year ago, we'd create an administrative condition, and that's number three, that's new, that basically outlined it, so that when somebody comes in and says, "Why am I taking care of the public sidewalk in the public right-of-way as a private property owner?" Instead of relying upon bootstrapping other laws together to say, "Oh, because that's why." It's a lot easier to have one condition of approval that says, "That's what everybody in Palm Springs does, and we're imposing it as a condition." But I think, you know, we need some time, but I do think we need to talk about number seventy-nine, so that you have a little background on it, and, you know, I think some of the frustrations from the applicant had to do with that one, because it's a pretty big dollar item relative to a new condition. But maybe Dave Bracken can address that.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Does engineering have a comment then on that to assist us and the applicant?
Yes, absolutely. This will take a couple minutes, but not very long. First of all, I was under the impression that our development engineer had spoken with you about the conditions. If that's not the case, that's unacceptable to our department, and we're supposed to be doing that. So I apologize to Marvin about that, if that indeed happened. The conditions that we wrote, and I'll talk about seventy-nine in one second, were basically just taking the existing conditions and concentrating on which ones are applicable to this map. For the information of Bob, because the map borders on both streets, the conditions for the street improvements on both streets are there. That is not intended to mean that you have to, the first thing you have to do is build all those street improvements. They have to be listed because they're part of the map, as they were listed in the original conditions. But certainly, you build a building, you do those street improvements, you secure them all, and you build them when you build them. That's the intent, that was always the intent, and that's still the intent. The condition that broke the camel's back shouldn't, and most likely won't. And the reason I say that, let me tell you what it's from. Our department discovered by means of a letter from SEVAG, I think it was in March of this year, that the city council entered into an agreement almost ten years ago with SEVAG with regard to the Mid Valley Parkway. And of the terms of that agreement, Mid Valley Parkway was built, total was somewhere around $14 million. Out of that $14 million, the city of Palm Springs portion of the improvements was like $7 million. SEVAG paid, regional funds paid for half of that. What it boils down to was, the city was on the hook for 25% of that. There was a credit given to the assessment district work that was done on Gene Autry last decade, and it boiled down to, I think, within $300,000 of the $14 million. The city entered into an agreement with SEVAG wherein they agreed to assess development along the Mid Valley Parkway for that $300,000 on a fair share basis, so front-footage. Now, none of the people currently in engineering were there when that was done, although we should have known about it. We didn't realize about it, and in fact, SEVAG staff didn't either until they somehow found it, sent us a letter. We re-searched it, and sure enough, there it was. We put it, we need to put it in conditions so that commission and council can decide which way they want to go with this. There hasn't really been any development along the Mid Valley Parkway that has actually constructed. There was one other development that was... that was approved. There are a couple of options that the city has and with regard to this. And the intent of it being in the conditions is number one, to call to the attention that it exists and then to work out the options that the city would like to undertake, one of which is being to actually pay it back by measure A funds from the city. The city has any option to pay that $300,000 back from, to SEVAG. It just happened to be in that old agreement that it was said that it would be taken from, as a development fee. So that's where that came from. We didn't know that it existed at the time the conditions for the original, Mr. Noya's original project was there and that's why it wasn't there originally. And I've just explained why it's there now. I don't suspect, because I'm still in discussions with assistant city manager of how we wish to go on this, but I never suspected all along that it would end up being subject to commission and council approval, a development fee. It has to be there to let everyone know that the agreement exists from the earlier mid-'90s.
Thank you, Mr. Brockin. I think what we're seeing here is that we need, the applicant needs to meet with the development committee, go through these conditions, identify those that truly create a problem for the applicant, give the applicant an opportunity to identify those, identify them for the commission so that we can take them up in some orderly manner. And so I think that meeting has to take place before we get into the conditions. Just on the question I raised, if one of the applicant's team maybe would like to talk to us, the commission, a little bit about the phasing here and where you now see the project going and why we should not be concerned that we're being asked to approve an office building independent of the rest of the phasing on this project and why that should not be a concern to us.
To me, it's obvious. Number one, if we put the golf course in, which by the way is $18 million, so I get to lose $3 or $4 million a year for one office building, makes absolutely no sense. Number two is I'm not going to sell the vacation units without the golf course at least being committed. I could do the office building because I put eight people I know into it and said, "We're going to spec this building out for now" and they know I'm going to do it. You don't know that, that's fine. But what's the difference? So it's raw land like it is now? What is the difference whether I ever build that golf course? It's my advantage to build it, obviously, but what is the difference? How's it hurt the city? It doesn't hurt you guys at all. You've got to let me do it the way it could be financed. And I don't think you should tell me how to develop it. Whether you think it's planning or not, I think you're way off base. Now, I understand what you're trying to do and that's probably what the problem is. I mean, I'm just at wit's end, John, so don't, you know, don't take it personal. I'm just, I'm fed up. And the point, what we heard here proves my point. You know, we didn't get told, whatever, I don't care. Forget what happened. This project, you want this thing built, it's either going to be built through the city or it's going to be built without the city. That's really the bottom line here. And let's just cut to the chase. You've got to have some faith. I mean, other developers come in town that all of a sudden they're like, "Mr. King here, I'm breaking my butt. In one year, I turned this project around." When that guy's thing was terminated a year ago, I picked up the cost. Every month I'm damn delayed, I'm eating the cost. And you want to tell me how I should do it? Then give me $6 million, I'll do it your way. I mean, that's what it really boils down. And again, it's not personal to you, it's just that I'm not, forget it. You guys don't know what the hell's going on in the real world. This is a $240 million project that's going to turn the city around, that my reputation's on the line to get it done. That's more important than your goddamn conditions, excuse my expression. So look, you do what the hell you want. I'm done. I am done coming here and jumping through all these hoops. And again, it's not you guys, it's not necessary him, it's not him. It's crazy. I mean, oh, it's $300,000. I had no idea what that number is. You think I'm going to agree to any condition that I don't fully understand? You're a lawyer, would you do that?
Mr. Noya, I can understand you're a little upset, but we had, I know the council, I mean, I know the staff has put in an enormous amount of time on this project. We had some, a new application that you brought that staff now has to deal with and we have to deal with.
Right.
We didn't bring the application, you brought it. And it changes the situation, it requires us to look at it and that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
And it doesn't do any good for you to berate the staff.
I didn't berate the staff.
It doesn't do you any good to threaten the commission.
I didn't threaten the commission.
So I would suggest that everybody try and calm down. If you want to go forward, meet with our staff, see if we can get these conditions ironed out. I asked what I thought was a legitimate question. I didn't need to be cursed at over it.
I didn't curse you.
Okay.
I told you.
So, you know, let's see if we can get this thing on track. I think everybody here is doing their best to try and help you, Mr. Noya.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, it doesn't seem...
So anyway, can we have a motion to continue this thing?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we continue this for two weeks and then I have a comment if we get a second.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor of continuing the matter for two weeks, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just want to add a couple of comments. First of all, I appreciate the candor on behalf of the staff on some of these issues and whatever. I think it's important that, I think we have, as a commission, have been supportive of the development of this parcel on behalf of the Indian Landowners since the beginning. There's some confusion over the method that this came about because someone is asking that these conditions be more user-friendly. Obviously, it didn't work quite yet and I'm sure the bugs will get worked out. As any developer, the money's important and this notion of funds, that condition 79 is an open checkbook and we just heard a couple of numbers and there's other solutions. Those sorts of things need to be discussed and worked out. I suspect, and this may or may not happen as a project, the reality is, is Mr. Noya is now on the hook for the thing and is really in the driver's seat as a developer and he will make a decision on his own based on the conditions that come out and the people he goes to based on the economics of the project. And we can't change that. And that's his thing, but I think two weeks and a little bit of study is probably a good thing.
Okay, so we've had a motion approved to continue the matter for two weeks and give the opportunity to the applicant to meet with staff and see if we can get some of these conditions ironed out. We'll move on to the next item. This is item number five, case 5.935 PD 59, application by Desert Chapel for revisions to the Desert Chapel master plan, Plan Development District 59 to include, one, the addition of classrooms, a nursery and administrative building and a new special events area; number two, regulations regarding the time, place and manner of special events including nighttime football games; number three, consideration of rededication of the Sunny Dunes right-of-way; and number four, final development plans for an approximately 1,200 square foot storage building located on 10.16 acres at 630 South Sunrise Way, PD 59, Zone Section 24. Staff report, please.
Thank you. The item before you, as you noted, was additional, essentially revisions to the approved Plan Development District. The architect, Christopher Mills, is present and will answer any questions that we may have. I'll give you a little bit of background on the project. The original master plan was approved in 1975, which allowed the church in the R1C zone. In 1999, there was an expanded PD which included a number of new uses, including sanctuary, multipurpose building, library, administrative and K-12 school facilities, parking, daycare, related uses to the campus. The project was intended to occur in two phases. The first phase would include the sanctuary addition and the storage building and some parking. Phase 1B included a multipurpose building. Phase 1C included a two-story mixed-use building. And additional phases of 1D included some classrooms on modular, modular classrooms and location of these classrooms on foundations. Phase 2 included additional classrooms for a total number of 17 classrooms. Now, with the exception of the storage building, phase 1 has been completed and that's part of what we're going to look at today is the storage building. In terms of the PD, the applicant would like to add some additional classrooms, the administrative building and a new special events area. The nursery and toddler building and special events areas are on the maps and I'll walk you through those in a second. We also seek to establish regulations regarding the time, place and manner of special events that are held on the campus. The applicant proposes to conduct three special events a year, which would go until 9:00 PM, not extending past. They also would request permission to have a football schedule, up to 10 games a year, up to 10:00 PM, using PA lighting, bleachers. Field and parking lot would be cleared and lights off by 10:00 PM. The project, as I mentioned, included final development plans for 1,200 square foot building. I will walk you through those. As proposed, this would match the materials and character of existing buildings on site, white stucco and so forth. This building was reviewed by the design review committee earlier this week and was approved as being consistent with the earlier Plan Development District approval. A remaining issue is the applicant's request that the city accept dedication of the Sunny Dunes right-of-way. In the past, the city had previously abandoned the right-of-way for the development and creation of a campus as part of the master plan request. Easements were granted to Desert Water, National Golf and Mesquite Country Club. Easements were to provide reciprocal access for the maintenance facility and some of the operations that are in the back of the site. One of the problems with the easement has been that there's been an inability of the parties involved to provide the necessary insurance provisions which would provide for security of use of the easement. There's been an inability to move forward on that provision. Hence, the applicant has requested that we rededicate this portion of the street. We've attached a memo from engineering that states that essentially there's no benefit to re-accepting dedication of this street right-of-way. So we're going to ask you that you eliminate condition 34E and again, require the applicant to provide for this insurance purpose. We have a resolution attached with the original conditions of approval as well as some new conditions of approval. There's two of them and I'm going to talk about a third one that's been requested by the applicant. The environmental review on this process was completed in 1999. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared as part of the environmental assessment and review process in accordance with state law. There's three conditions that are at the last page of your report. I wanted to kind of walk you through those first. Two conditions and one that I'm going to add, sorry. And there are a number of people in the audience that would like to speak following my presentation at the board. The applicant has requested insertion of text on condition 1, which would read, "The applicant may conduct a maximum of three special events per year as delineated on the approved site plan," comma, "with temporary lighting and generator." So we would add to condition 1, "As delineated on the approved site plan." That would be a phrase added to 1. Then, the applicant's also requesting the addition of a third condition that would say, "The applicant may also conduct special events on area to the south of the chapel, as indicated on approved site plan." If I may, I will approach the boards and kind of walk you through the site.
Any restrictions on those, Alex, on number three that you're asking?
On condition number three, the applicant is not asking for any time, place or manner For orientation purposes, this is the approved master plan. Sunrise Way is here, north, arrow points in this direction. We have Sunny Dunes, San Lucas. This is the extension of the original Sunny Dunes, just shown on the proposed plan here. We have the cathedral, I'm sorry, the Mesquite Country Club maintenance facility here, DWA well and the drainage channel in this area. The proposed master plan is here. We have the playing field, which would be utilized and has been utilized as the special event for football, up to 10 games a year, not to extend past 10:00 PM. They're identifying temporary lighting with generators here. Future classrooms in phase 2 and phase 3 here. Special event area here to the east of the sanctuary. This is the area that we refer to in the conditions as a maximum of three events per year, not to extend past 9:00 PM. And the hard court area, which is designated here to the south of the sanctuary, this is the area that the applicant has requested, condition 3, that we provide for special events here in this area directly off of Sunrise Way. The applicant's thought is that this area is fairly shielded from the residential uses on this area to the east and northeast by the sanctuary and multipurpose and classroom buildings. The location of the storage building would be right here. This was approved in 1995 as part of the Plan Development District. Final development plans were approved earlier this week by design review committee as being consistent with the earlier preliminary plans. This concludes staff's presentation. We'll answer any questions you may have. And the applicant's representative is also here available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Alex. Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
I have a question.
Yes, Uncle Adel.
We have plenty of parking. You're taking that hardcore play area away from existing parking or...
This would still be utilized as parking.
Okay.
But it would be for special events, they would not use parking there. They would essentially block off the facility.
Thank you.
If, if I could make a comment regarding Sunny Dunes, because I think aside from just the level of activity that's occurred and some of the feelings between the church and its neighbors that have developed over the past couple of years because of events, with regards to the issue of Sunny Dunes, the applicant, Mesquite Country Club, worked very diligently to vacate the roadway as well as grant the easements for the alternative access back to the maintenance building and the DWA and the like. Where that came apart was the issue of insurance and hold harmless and all that wonderful stuff that gets fairly technical in the world of insurance. It's my understanding that the church has insurance through its national group and they would not hold another party harmless. They would not issue that type of a rider or statement in the policy. And at that point, Mesquite Country Club had the problem that they felt that they were not meeting up to the requirements of the conditions of approval and that they assumed some risk in using that easement without that type of coverage. So it really came down, as I recall in our meetings, as a problem with insurance. The church chose to not seek alternative coverage. The city actually had its insurance people look, because we get that all the time for different types of projects, where we're named as co-insured, you know, it's pretty common. But it really came down to the type of insurance that the church had. And if that's not the case, I'm sure I'll get corrected. So the whole issue of the church asking the city to take a street back that's now in the middle of a school is really the concern that engineering has and the planning staff has, that it really, I'm not sure we would have designed the school or been as comfortable with the school. with the school had we known we were going to be asked to have a public street through the middle of it where kids go back and forth all day long. Now they're supervised. That's the way it was before. We vacated the street where they went back and forth, but I think now we're, we've got a private school where they're asking us to put a public street right down the middle of it. Even though it doesn't carry a lot of traffic, it doesn't serve a lot of other development, it still technically is a public right-of-way and a public street. Some of the correspondence you received outlined that insurance issue, I think from Mesquite Country Club Homeowners Association, their attorney outlined that. We didn't outline that in our staff report, but that's really the crux of the issue because we were really close to having the street issue finished with the exception of the insurance. I just wanted to add that in because I think it'll come up at the public comment period. So Chairman, that completes our report. We'll certainly answer any questions before.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Mr. Hockenadl.
The only other group that needs to use the street is Mesquite Country Club for their utility building or their maintenance building?
Well, it's Mesquite Country Club, the homeowners association, they have a small maintenance facility inside the golf course maintenance facility. It's the golf course that needs it as well as Desert Water Agency.
Okay, so if you vacated it, it still wouldn't be, well, what you did before?
The street is already vacated. We do not own it. And there's a, excuse me, an easement. Alex, could you show them where the easement is? There's an easement along the channel that goes through the parking lot. And where the homeowners association's prime concern, well, that's the existing roadway and the vacated roadway. And then the easement runs along the channel. Alex, can you point out where the easement is? And through there. And the issue that came up is, is the homeowners association, without having that additional insured or whatever the provision is, they basically said, "Now we're asked to drive through a parking lot where we've got cars and kids and people and we're having to pick up the liability."
Right.
But it really came down to something that we were quite surprised that could not be worked out because the additional insured and the specific language that the attorneys and the insurance people work on, we do it all the time to make things work. But in this case, the church said, "We would not be able to do it because our insurer won't do it." And that's, that's why this issue is here. Clearly, the special events side of this, the ball fields, the outdoor activity, you need to hear the public comment because it's been a challenge for staff to referee that in the middle of a football season, be asked to stop football games that are scheduled. And that's why we encourage the applicant to refile so that we officially allow nighttime football games or we don't. And if we don't, they have to find an alternative location or time for football games. And, you know, schools that don't have light sometimes have Saturday games or they sometimes have Friday afternoon games or they look at alternative venues. But they did have a good season last year and I know that they found it, it was very good for the spirit of the school to have a football team that did very well and pulled the school together. And they're now asking for that ability to have nighttime games.
Any other questions of staff before we open the public hearing? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Please combine your comments to three minutes. Give us your name and address, please, and sign the clipboard before you leave.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name's Marie Bachnevich, seven four three nine nine, Highway one eleven, Suite M, Palm Desert. And I am the attorney for Mesquite Country Club Condominium Homeowners Association. I hope you've had a chance to see the letter that I did submit to Planning Department yesterday. Mesquite has a number of concerns. As staff has pointed out, there is a history here between the association, which represents approximately six hundred property owners in the city of Palm Springs, and Desert Chapel. And over time, we're very sorry to say, the relationship between Desert Chapel and the association has become full of friction relating to exactly the sorts of issues that are raised by this application, to wit, noise and light. The association many times sought the city's assistance in enforcing the existing conditions of approval for the currently permitted uses at Desert Chapel, for special events, for functions, what have you. Time and time again, there were events which were outside of the scopes of approvals, too loud, after hours, what have you. Many times requests have been made. Please help us. Please enforce the conditions. Get code enforcement out there. Get something going on to fall on deaf ears. We know that several of our members have made appeals directly to Desert Chapel. Is there anything that can be done? There are some property owners, I believe in excess of thirty units, that are marked on your map there. They are the closest residents affected by this application. Some of those homeowners have directly approached Desert Chapel about their concerns with noise and disturbances, after hours, or just simply too loud, and have basically been shown the door. We're very sorry about this state of affairs. We wish we could all be more neighborly, but the truth is, we're now being faced with what's essentially a full functioning private school with a sports stadium-type use that's being asked to be put into play permanently here. And one of our concerns, and I said this in my letter, having this application be brought now in August when many of our members are not able to participate in what I would think would be some kind of a community input on the advisability of this scope of use in this particular location, it's just not possible. They're not here in the heat of August. They'll be here, they'll be starting to come back in a month. And one thing that I would sincerely request is that we put this over at least thirty days so that our community can really weigh in on what's this going to mean to them to have permanently, basically, a high school football season right next to their golf course and their condominiums. This is a very important issue to our residents and one that I think many of them would like to come here and address you on if they had the opportunity. Frankly, we don't see the urgency if Desert Chapel is intending on starting the football season up with this current school year. I would certainly wish they would have come before the commission earlier and that there had been some kind of a community process to deal with this. I'm sure that if the commission were considering an application fresh from some private school to come in with this kind of use, including a football season, it would involve perhaps a higher level of scrutiny than what this application process seems to be entailing.
Thank you for your comments. I think your three minutes are about up. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
My name is Roger Lubin. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Mesquite Country Club Homeowners Association. I want to comment on the insurance issue. I too am shocked that the, that Desert Chapel could not procure insurance. The essence of the easement required them to do that and to come forth stating that they tried, but their master insurance policy wouldn't allow them to, to name additional insured and then try to skate on that requirement strikes me as absolutely lame. I don't see any evidence that they went out to look for other insurance, nor do I see anywhere in the language of the easement wording that says, "Well, if you try and you fail to get insurance, you're absolved from the responsibility." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I reside at two thousand and one Camino Paracel and Mesquite Country Club. I've lived at my current address at Mesquite for fifteen years now as a full-time resident. As a citizen of Palm Springs, I understand I have a right to live at my residence in peace and quiet. I believe there's a city noise and light ordinance that's in effect twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That guarantees me that right. I'm before you today to ask that you do the right thing and enforce that ordinance with Desert Chapel. They should not be above the law. When I look across this room from wall to wall, that's pretty much the distance of my bedroom to Desert Chapel property and many other homeowners. I work seven days a week at my store. I need to get my rest at night. When I turn into bed at ten PM, I should not have to be kept awake by light generators shining through my condo or hundreds of screaming football fans or outdoor music concerts that the city has documented can be heard over one mile away from Desert Chapel grounds or train whistles tooting outside my window or skateboarders after midnight in the parking lot or parking lot street sweepers at midnight or outdoor stage construction at two AM or carpet cleaning trucks with generators at two and three AM or cars coming and going with teenagers playing outdoors well after midnight. I ask the commission to please address these issues and to see to it that the right-of- Desert Chapel neighbors that are citizens of this city are protected. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Chris Mills. I'm the architect for Desert Chapel on this project and on the master planning over the years. Just a quick note, I am not going to speak to the insurance problem at all. I'm not really involved with that and Mr. Marshall, I think, will speak to that end. The purpose really for coming back with this master plan revision is some fine tuning on some buildings, but more so to establish a program of events that are outlined on that master plan at the urging of Mr. Evans and, and to once and for all outline what Desert Chapel can do, where they can do it, and how they can do it, and how long they can do it. And I think this is a method that simplifies it for, for everyone. Whether or not, you know, you agree with everything on the, on the master plan for event-wise is certainly up to, to you to, to figure out, but the attempt here is to, is to once and for all solve the, the problem, as unfortunate as it is, with the neighbors on the, on the north. As far as the, the master plan itself goes, it's basically the same master plan that we've had since, I think, ninety-five. You're asking, we're asking for final approval on the storage building along the north property line, which is exactly where it was located on the original ninety-five approval. This is just the final plans for it. Mr. Meyerhoff in his explanation of one of the events noted that there was a special event area out in the parking lot to the, off of Sunrise to the, to the west of the project. The, really, all that parking lot area is for, is for hardcore play during the day for this, for the school. It is purely parking lot use any other time. The event area, and I tried to explain to him on the phone, so I understand why things don't work out on the phone exactly, but it's a little area at the entrance to the church, which is currently the gathering place when you come into church and when you leave church. That is the area that is, is an event area. It's an event area with, with no special lighting, with no PA system, with no anything like that. It's, it's subject to the normal conditions of, of the PD. So I just wanted to make that, that clarification. As Mr. Evans noted, we are not, I mean, we are not happy about having to, to abandon the, or ask for abandonment of this, of the, the street again, or not abandonment, but ask you to take it back again because certainly the master plan was laid out with that street not, not there. I think Mr. Marshall addressed the fact that I think he's been unable to, to get to a resolution with, with the homeowners association on this, on the insurance item. It should be mentioned that we have gained easement and insurance requirements with DWA. They're happy with the situation and the golf course is happy with, with the association. The only, the only one that has been a problem so far has been the HOA. So if there's any questions, I will certainly be out here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Frank Marshall. I'm the administrative pastor over at the church and we've had a lot of conversations in the past and so I don't suppose we're going to solve everything now, but our intent is really to get along and I feel like after we, after we've been, we've been described here that maybe we're really pretty bad guys, but really we're just doing, I think, the same thing that a lot of organizations in the community are doing, trying to serve the needs of people that live in the community. And obviously, not everybody utilizes our organization, not everybody utilizes the Boys and Girls Club or any one of a number of other organizations, but we serve, I think, a very, you know, large population of the community and so that's all that, what we're really trying to do. There are issues on the easement and so forth. I'm going to leave that to one of our church board members to discuss with you in just a moment. Noise issues, believe me, we want to solve the issues. We had, I had a letter from Ron Novy who was the president, I don't know if he still is the president. He lives right on the other side of the, of the wall from us. He was objecting to leaf blowers early in the morning. You know, I took care of that. He sent me a thank you letter a month later. So I was pleased we had at least one little victory in the midst of, you know, lots of other difficulties. We've had problems with our hedges, not living in the water, not supplying proper, you know, and so we, it's, it kind of goes on, but we're committed to trying to, to make it all work together. And we, there was a concert that took place. It was an aberration. It wasn't really us. It was, they probably would have gone through normal channels and held it at the Palm Springs Stadium where numbers of other concerts and things take place. And we were led to understand from the people holding it that they'd obtained proper approvals. We understand that didn't happen. We've apologized to everybody for that. What we're asking for on the, the extra or special events is really nothing new. We have done a harvest festival at Halloween Day. We prefer not to celebrate it as Halloween for spiritual purposes. We call it Harvest Festival. We've done that for twenty or more years. And it's done by eight o'clock. The cleanup is done by eight-thirty. If for some reason there's somebody making noise out there after that point, you know, we can address those issues. And just so you understand, I presume you do, that we, our facility is not completely fenced in, so people, I mean, any person off the street can come and play basketball or park their car and make noise and we can't, we really can't control it. I'm sure that some of that does happen. So we want to get along. We want to have the opportunity. We have really probably five or six scheduled home football games and we have probably a couple hundred people, plus or minus, that attend that. And really, I mean, I have the rulebook and everything here for you. The game can only go at the most an hour and a half. And I mean, that's, that's just as long as it can go with the timeouts and interceptions and everything else. It can't go longer than that. Perfectly happy to lower all the lights except for one facing the field at nine o'clock or nine-thirty to, to, to clean it up and be done with it. And, you know, it means a lot to the kids and a lot to the, to the families in the community to, to be able to do that. I presume you have many other questions or things that you might want to consider. I'd be here to, to answer any, anything that you might inquire about.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'm Mike Lindley. Yeah, there's basically two very separate issues, obviously, that we're looking at here. The first being the idea of, of when we're talking about the time and the, the events and the time and the sound, to have codified or have written down when someone says that we're outside of the bounds to know what the bounds are. And in fact, the, the time mentioned of, of the gentleman wanting to be able to go to bed at ten o'clock and not have the events going on, we, we agree with. And, you know, I want to start off, and so anyway, with the time and the events, what we've written down and what you've said, there's three events that we do that are done earlier in the evening. We'd like to be able to do up to ten football games a year. At ten o'clock, the lights would go off and we would just ensure that that's what would take place. place. That's one issue. The second issue is the street vacation, and actually, I think a much more hostile sound is given to our relationship than what actually I share with the people that I know back there. There's some new faces that I've not met before, but actually, our meetings aren't hostile. They're quite pleasant. We just can't find a resolution. I do have to correct a couple issues. One, we are not self-insured. We use Guide One. There are not a lot of companies left who insure churches and schools, for obvious reasons in this environment, but Guide One is not, it's not, I mean, the sound was given as though we do it ourselves, and we've kind of chosen not to do it this way. Guide One is pretty major, and the Hugh Curtis is our agent. We asked him, well, can you find someone else who would do this? I'd like to give you, in my remaining brief time, how we got to this. It actually was a meeting with the city attorney. When we got down to this last issue, we had, we resolved this issue with, of the insurance, with the, at that time, American Golf, and with DPA, DPW?
DW.
DWA, here, where the insurance burden placed on us by the city was, and I don't remember the exact insurance, the exact language, but it's basically to shift that burden. It wasn't really specified. With American Golf and with the water, that it was sufficient that we give them indemnification and a certificate of reasonable insurance. And I don't remember the amount at that. It might have been $2 million, but those two were the two items that were, and that was agreed to on both parties. They were signed off and done, and it was just left with the HOA, and we couldn't get over this issue. We met with the city attorney. They were on one side of the table. We were on the other with about 10 issues, and it came down to, basically, as I recall, the city attorney said, well, these nine issues, you guys need to not do, but there's this one issue, and he phrased it very similar to the way, with the respect Mr. Evans has phrased it. This additional insured's no problem. You need to just do that. We do it, as you said, we do it all the time. Oh, we do it all the time, and we called up, quick calls, we'd like to make a concession here, because we'd like to resolve this and move forward. No problem. We do it all the time. The problem with stating things that way is, the insurance company in Guide One will be happy to do it. However, they get a reciprocal additional insured from the other company. These are things with nominal costs. We're talking $52, $100 a year, or no-cost items. We actually, at one point in the discussion, said to Mesquite, have your company give us this reciprocal additional insured, and we'll pay it. We'll pay 20 years in advance. I mean, it's, you know, at most, $1,000 to $2,000. They received counsel that increased their insurance exposure to a degree that wasn't acceptable to them. So we went, we explored heavily. We pushed hard, and we have obviously a sizable policy with this company, and we said, we've got to have this, because we had our, at the same time, we have our insurance person trying to find this with other companies of this size. We can't, and what we were finally advised to, when it's put forth as though, oh, well, you know, you didn't really try, maybe you could have found someone else. And what we've been told is, you may find someone else to do this now, but if they come down five, 10 years from now and say, you know what, we're dropping this additional insured issue, we're right back in breach where we were. And that's why what we said is, we don't want to be antagonistic, and we don't want an adversarial situation, so we went to Chris and said, Chris, we got to just remove, you know, we're about, everything that we're, everything we're about is not negative. Everything we're about in the community is the opposite of an antagonistic relationship. We said, let's just find a way to work this where we could just put it back the way it was, where we don't have the street. And they're driving, and nobody has insurance. There's no indemnification. There's no, we don't insure the street for anybody. And let's just put it back the way it was. We actually received a letter from the association saying, fine, just do that, you know, give the street back, and we'll rescind the little agreement that we have with them. And so that's why we went to Chris and said, redraw it and submit it where we give it back. I mean, it really didn't have a benefit to us. We were trying to do things to make, it's not like we're building buildings on this new land we've acquired. So there's, to give you a little more of the history of how we got to it.
We need you to wind up a little bit here.
That's it. So give me another 30 seconds, and what I would ask is, what we've basically said and what Chris has presented in rededicating, giving the street back is starting over. So let's put everything back to where it was before we had this issue. If we can then start with them and find a way to move forward, again, great, but we need to, we need to remove the hostility of that. We're talking about putting things back simply the way it was before we had this discussion, so the city would be in no detriment beyond where they were anyway. And we can move forward.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
My name is Bobby Gaffney. I'm the manager of Mesquite HOA, and I'm the one who receives the calls when Desert Chapel misbehaves. Anyway, Mike is correct. There isn't a lot of animosity between the parties. I think as far as the events ending at 10:00 PM, parking areas cleaning out at 10:00 PM, if everything is complied with, Mesquite owners don't have a problem. Lighting out, PA system off 10:00 PM, no problem. What we've run into is that it extends beyond 10:00. There are events running as late as 2:00 AM, trucks coming in, different things going on. Where do we turn? Who enforces that? Who's policing that to ensure that everything does end and close down at 10:00 PM? That's part of our frustration. With the insurance, I understand they've had difficulty getting the insurance. We have to have it. Our exposure and liability has been increased so much by having to go through the parking lot. And even now, if the city takes the street back, as Mr. Evans said, with the school on both sides of that street, our exposure and liability is still increased. So we're at a no-win situation. Either way, we need to be protected now, whether the city takes the street back or whether it's vacated. You know, we are nonprofit, and so our money is very precious to us, too, and we're hoping that this can be worked out.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, go back to council, I mean, to the commission for comments and action.
I was here in 1999 when the neighbors were assured that this wasn't going to be a football field, it was a sports area and whatever, and so I'm sympathetic to the lighting issue. I, you know, there's some great news about this. The site intensity's increased. They've got a very successful high school there. It's an important community asset, but you also have what I think are compelling and worthwhile concerns of the neighbors, and they're certainly alleging that they're not getting much cooperation from Desert Chapel when they're saying that the response from Desert Chapel is that you're on, we're on private property and we can do what we want. And I also don't buy the argument that if after 10:00, you know, the gates are open, someone comes in, and, you know, we can't control that, well, you know, that's your property, you might want to hire a security guard. So I'm not, you know, I'm not sympathetic to that. I'd even like to see a traffic study and maybe a traffic light at Sunny Dunes. I've waited there a long time to take a left turn, and that's going to cost you a lot of money, too. So there's a lot of issues here that could be sorted out, and I think the smartest thing to do is for you all to go back, give, we'll give you a couple of weeks and sort of work this out, you know, a schedule of games, if that's acceptable, when they're going to end. I'd give Mr. McMillan your cell phone, Frank, and if there's a problem, I think you ought to call you directly. We have that happen in a couple of downtown establishments where there's noise issues, and the owner of the establishments takes responsibility for it. I'm not buying the, you know, after 10:00, you know, it could be anybody. I think you ought to be responsible for your property. And I'm inclined to table it for a period of time and have them work it out. Otherwise, if it comes back, this particular commissioner's at shut down the lighting and studying the intensity of the intersection there, and maybe even doing a traffic study. And I don't think you want that. That's where I'm at.
Mr. Wright?
You know what, if we're going to table this for two weeks, another thing that I'd like to see in that discussion is to separate the easement way from the lights and the special events. That's two separate issues, as I see it. And, you know, it complicates it in terms of, you know, I sympathize with the tenants there, but the easement thing, to me, complicates that. I'd like to see, when you go back and have the discussion, that it's two separate items, and so that we can vote on whether we want the lights and the special events, and also deal with the street side.
Thank you. Mr. Hockenadl?
Are the football games, are they on Friday nights, the same as Palm Springs High School? So you have sound coming from Palm Springs High School, and they're usually finished by 10:00 also, the games at the high school? Close? Yeah. So you basically have a sound of another game going on regardless if they're having one or not? And is it really going to affect them that much? I'm sure, you know, their stadium's a little closer than the high school, but if there's already a sound going on from a game, you're not going to be sleeping anyway.
Well, just a quick comment of mine. I'm not sure that the city stadium is as close to these folks as this one is.
It's a proximity issue.
So you've got a real proximity issue. My own thought is, is this ought to be continued to give the parties an opportunity to really sit down and try and find some solutions here. My own feeling, my own sense of this is similar to Mr. Matthews, that if you can get something worked out, that's fine. You might even think about, if you absolutely need these night games, the games last an hour and a half, start the games at 7:30 and have the thing lights out at 9:00. That gives everybody a chance to get out of there by 10:00. Give yourself a little leeway here. My own feeling is that you ought to try to find a way here with the homeowners' association and the school to find some solutions that the two of you, that everybody can live with here, before it comes to us to vote on it. And we will vote on it, but I'm not sure that that's going to make everybody happy. So is there, and does the staff think that two weeks is enough? Mr. Evans?
Mr. Chairman, you have a number of items on the agenda regarding this item, and the primary issue that you've heard about has to do with the planned development district. The final development plans for the 1,200-square-foot storage building, which are absolutely consistent with the preliminary approval, we would recommend that you go ahead and take action on those, unless you have a concern about the storage building, and really, your scope of review on the storage building is, does it comply with what was put in the master plan? It does. So we'd recommend that you consider approving that item. And then, with regards to a continuance, I think what you would ask in that motion, we encourage you to make it fairly specific, that staff, the applicant, Mesquite Homeowners' Association, sit down and try and resolve as many issues as we can. I think on paper, relative to events, we're pretty close. Being the person that got phone calls from the police department at 10:00 and 10:30 at night, and I've got police officers standing at a football game saying, well, should I arrest somebody? You know, that's the issue, and that's the challenge, and I think that's what you've heard from Mesquite Country Club, is that things go past 10:00. And I've had numerous phone calls from the police department about, what do we do? You know, a police officer doesn't feel real good on church grounds, threatening to find somebody to write a ticket to, because it's hard to find the right person. So I think those issues in the street, we can come back in two weeks. I think by putting two weeks on it, it's important, because looking at the schedule, they have their first game September 12th. And I've got to tell you that I either have to put them on notice, they can't have a game on the 12th, or I have to make a special approval at staff level to allow a football game on the 12th, and I need to do that pretty quick, because if we say no, you can't have a game, they obviously have to reschedule, or we're going to have a police officer and a planning official out in the street wondering, what do we do with all these people? If you could take action on the PD, and then in your motion, acknowledge that, provided they comply with the criteria, that I'm going to issue a permit for one football game, and we're going to test them before you're, right after your next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move we approve the final development plan of the 1,200-square-foot storage building, subject to the previously approved conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Now, we've got this public hearing, so we're going to have to item, we're going to have to do a roll call vote on that.
Mr. Hockenadl?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberg?
Aye.
Do you have another motion?
Yeah, I'd move we continue this item for two weeks, and at that point, then, direct the staff, the homeowners' association, and the Desert Chapel to meet to resolve these issues, including the regulations regarding time, place, and manner of special events, and also, at that time, consider the addition of the classrooms and nursery in the administrative building, and the new special events here.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Grinch?
I want to add a comment. I mean, I'm sympathetic to this, and I really appreciate the school, and whenever my son and daughter go to a private school, they play their games on Saturdays, because they're in a neighborhood that doesn't have a lot of lights. I kind of like the idea of, if there's a big event going late, use an Angel Stadium, it's right there, but you got to work it out with the neighborhood, and the record doesn't look good for such a great place, so please work that out.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Hockenadl?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberg?
Aye. Passed unanimously, both motions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we take a quick break?
Yes.
A great idea.
We'll take five minutes, though. Let's try to get back, and we've got a couple of other items, and see if we can't get the, this meeting done.
Always get his TV on. We're gonna call a meeting back to order. We are working our way through the agenda and I think we're at item number six. This is case 5.0968 and case 5.0970-5.0953, application by the City of Palm Springs for zoning ordinance amendments. Number one, to allow second family unit applications ministerially without discretionary review in accordance with Government Code Section 65852.2, AB 1866, ministerial action, citywide in the RG5, R1, RGA, and R2 zones. And, number two, to allow live theater signs in historic Central Business District CBD Zone and city-owned historic properties citywide. These are two very separate and distinct items that have been put together on the same agenda item. I'm not sure exactly why, but Larry, maybe you can enlighten us with a quick staff report on these two items?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. That's correct. I've combined them because they're both text amendments, but at the pleasure of the Commission, I could do one at a time and we could take action on those if you like. If I may, I'd like to start on the theater signs first.
Okay.
And that's the case number 5.0970. You had before you an application that was previously presented to the Planning Commission and then was followed up at a study session. This is an amendment to the sign ordinance in regards to creative life theater signs. And this amendment would allow the Planning Commission to review and approve creative and unique signage for live theater type businesses located in specific historic properties in the Central Business District, city-owned properties, under certain restrictions through a site and architectural review process. That's just a summary. I know we've talked about this before, so if there's any questions, I could definitely try to answer those for you.
Is there any questions, staff, on that particular item? And what I would suggest we do is take these separately because I think they are very distinct issues. And if we can discuss this particular item, and I'll open a public hearing on it, it's a public hearing item. Is anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and go back to staff on this. We've had this a couple of times now, had this issue before us. Is there any discussion or any proposed action in regard to this item? Now, I know that we have two Commissioners who aren't here, one of whom expressed strong feelings on this, that we not approve this. And that was Tracy Conrad, who was against the idea of having television type signage and so on. I remember that discussion. I don't recall whether Diane Moran spoke up on it. I have some concerns about it. So, I don't know about the other Commissioners and whether they have any concerns about it or how they feel about it.
Mr. Chairman, I won't be supporting this particular item frankly because of the history. This is a, not that I wouldn't, don't want to encourage these things to be successful, not that I'm opposed to creative signage. This is, in my view, the result of bad negotiations upon bad negotiations and people downtown not getting along and it's a poor substitute for cooperation and good planning, so I won't be supporting it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I feel the same way. I'm not going to be supporting this particular item. I don't think it's good for the city.
Is there a motion to, one way or the other, on it? Jerry? All right, make a motion to deny the application?
Okay. I'll make a motion to deny the, in case number 5.0970, text amendment application to amend the zoning ordinance in regard to Section 93.20.04, to deny the application.
On the theater signs?
On the theater signs, correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Mr. Hokanado?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberger?
Aye. That motion passes 5-0. On the other application, I have a suggestion on the other application. And that is, I read the staff report on this and I have a concern about this particular item. And in talking to Doug about it, there apparently is this state law now embodied in Government Code, in the Government Code section that I cited, that requires us to do certain things as a city in regard to these second family units. And I see this as having some real potential planning problems, particularly for some of our residential neighborhoods, that may see some of these family units. And I didn't really understand the code section or what we're required to do as a city and whether we have any options, whether there is anything we can do to mitigate the effect of this legislation, where we have to allow it, if there are areas of town where we don't have to allow it. And I was going to suggest that maybe the city attorney could come and talk to us, or the Assistant City Attorney, or somebody from the city attorney's office, to explain to us what we can and cannot do, what we have to do, and whether there are some things that we might be able to do to mitigate the impact of this. So, that was a suggestion that came to my mind as I was reading this and really not able to get, I don't think, a full understanding from the staff report.
Question for staff?
Yes.
On this housing issue, I guess a question is that, as you look at many of the estates in town, Las Palmas, Deepwell, the Mesa, there are many people renting their guest house out that based on current zoning is not allowable. It's a second, apartments above garages. As you drive through the neighborhood, you see quite a bit, I know people that live in them. Would this legitimize that? Because it's all over town anyway. Or would that, does that help it? Does it hinder it?
Well, the intent of the law is to reduce the impacts that a public hearing would have and kind of slow it down. And the intent is to get discretionary review and put it in the hands of the counterperson, per se, if it falls criteria. So, you have to establish criteria so that it's easily ministerial. So, legislation basically has decided, has come together and decided that this is a really great resource for lower, maybe moderate income, the granny flat situation where you have Grandma and Grandpa, Mom and Dad, maybe some caretakers, very good resource for that kind of housing. And in some communities, that's, it's a lack thereof. There's a good credit in our housing element that we could achieve by providing these types of housing. But it is important to note that this does not, this new law does not preclude the city from creating another level of, you know, review, like a CUP, discretionary review. But it would take some effort on staff's part and the city attorney's part to really analyze the ordinance and look at why you would require that further depth of review for certain types of properties. And we looked at that and we really, I couldn't come up with a real good argument, maybe except in the hillsides, but that's more of environmental. And the law allows us to mitigate though and suggests strongly that we mitigate those to a level of non-significance, so that you could approve the housing unit. Now, on the other hand, Mr. Chairman, I mentioned maybe more of a social issue where this could probably be an impact, or maybe it's traffic. But again, legislation requires that you look at those impacts and do your best to mitigate them so that it does not become an issue. And again, if I can step back a little bit, we would have to go back and look at which types of housing and which zone, in fact, would require a CUP. And that's one of the questions I did ask in my staff report for direction on, and we would be more than happy to put that together and work more in depth with the city attorney to come up with. That's going to be a little bit more complicated and the staff report would be a little bit more analytical and there'd be some charts comparing some of these thresholds. This report before you is a very basic, meets the intent, I believe, working with the city attorney, that because it establishes criteria within the legislation that, you know, that we could go by and is non-discretionary, it's ministerial, so.
Well, and just so we all understand by ministerial, I think what is being said there is that the legislation, the Government Code section that we're talking about, as I understand it, is contemplating that these second units would be approved at the counter, that they would not go through any of the ordinary planning process, they wouldn't go to design review, they wouldn't come to the Commission, they would be subject to staff approval, and it mandates, as I understand it, staff approval at the counter.
That's correct, unless it's a pill.
And what I, I mean, this is, from what I understand, a very major change in the way second units have been handled by the city in the past. And that in order for second units to be permitted in R1 zones, and I think maybe in other zones, that they have to meet certain criteria. And we have historically not allowed those units to be rented, that they're not to be rental units, which, at least historically, has been inconsistent with an R1 zone. The idea that you would have a single-family residence with another unit on the same property that was being used as a rental unit. And so, in looking at this thing and reading it through the first time, I saw this as potentially a very major change, an important area of our planning in this city, and maybe it's good. I don't know, but it's something I think that we ought to thoroughly understand and we ought to have an opportunity perhaps to think about and discuss more carefully so that we do, if there are ways that we think that we ought to restrict this, and if we can do it, then maybe we should. Mr. Evans, you were looking to make a comment?
Of course. Today's a good day to continue items. We knew that coming in. In this particular case, and I'll express an opinion, from a smaller town's perspective, I'm not thrilled with the state legislation. I don't think many planners are because there's usually a big difference between a duplex neighborhood and a single-family neighborhood. When you start getting into estate properties, if they have a rental unit and somebody drives within the compound and, you know, you've already got 10 cars on the property, you know, it doesn't make much difference. You don't know the difference. But in some of our neighborhoods, it could make a substantial difference and could affect the quality of life. And I share the concerns that I think I'm hearing from the Commission. My suggestion would be, is we have a study session next Wednesday, that we ask the city attorney's office to attend the study session, to give you a range of opportunities. I think what really, what this is going to come down to is if you look at the last page of your ordinance, page 31, actually starts at the bottom of 30, or it starts talking, it's Section 6, 931800, accessory apartments. You know, the critical element there is we delete the conditional use permit requirement. I mean, the rest of it's just confusing to look at. All it does is deal with where in the city these would be allowed, and it's all residential zones. So, everything up to 30 is just all residential zones. That's all you need to worry about. What you might want to think about is what are the items, what are the specific items that if you have to do this, I'm going to have to tell you that you're going to have to, or the state will do it for us somewhere down the road? What are the types of things that you would put as requirements on a conditional use permit if you had one? And I think the key one that we've been using is can't rent. I don't think the state law will allow you to continue to do that because we all know in most cases, the minute somebody moves in, it's a rental. You know, and I hate doing final inspections on these units because I usually get to meet the tenant and I'm introduced to the tenant by the owner that knows they can't rent. And at that point, what do you do? Throw them out. Yeah. So, if you see things in there, you know, that you think we should add in, that's the guts of this ordinance. Having said that, on the other hand, one of the challenges I have is with the increased amount of really good business that we have, I got to figure out a way to get some planner time to work on the big projects so that we don't have the flare-ups that you saw today because we're spending all our time haggling over little tiny permits. So, on one hand, I don't like it. On the other hand, if we can develop the right conditions, you're going to probably end up with what you're getting anyway and maybe better. You just won't have a public hearing and most of these go through pretty quickly unless somebody's got an illegal unit that they've been renting and the tenant's been a problem. That's about the only time you're going to get comments from the neighborhood. So, if you spend your time looking at what are the things you think you would like to operationally put in, that's the key to this ordinance. But I think you're going to get stuck doing it. Next Wednesday?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, let me, this is a public hearing item. Let me open the public hearing. Anybody here wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Like to make a motion?
And entertain a motion.
To continue this until next Wednesday?
Can we do that?
Well, you ask us to put it on the agenda for next Wednesday as a discussion item and then continue the public hearing to September 10th.
So, with that, that's the motion. There's a second. We need a roll call vote on this.
Mr. Hokanado?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mr. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberger?
Aye. Okay, so we all will read this material and come prepared with some suggestions.
Who seconded that motion?
Mr. Matthews? I think that covers all of the items on the agenda. Item number, and takes us to item number 12, general plan update?
Mr. Chairman, just for purposes of, on number seven, since it is on your agenda, and we did discuss, we do need to state that we do not have a quorum. And then, all you need to do is enter it into the record, register the abstentions, and then I state we can't take action on it. We'll put it on your next agenda.
We'll call item number seven, case 5.0-
Excuse me, eight.
I'm sorry, item number eight, pardon me. Case 5.0344, application by the City of Palm Springs and Alakaliante Band of Kewee Indians for architectural approval of a parking lot on the southeast corner of Calle El Segundo and Andreas Road, R4 VP Zone, Section 14. Mr. Evans, I think on that matter, as you indicated, we do not have a quorum.
If you could have each individual Commissioner state their abstentions?
And on that particular matter, I would have to abstain. My place of business is within 500 feet of that location.
Chairman, I have to abstain because I, my business has done business with the tribe in the last year.
Mr. Chairman, I have to abstain because I manage property adjacent to the project.
Mr. Chairman, I have to abstain because I'm part owners and a piece of property adjacent to the property.
Mr. Wright?
Don't you have to abstain because you're sitting next to me?
Okay, so it appears that-
The prairie schooner?
That's right, you're-
Prairie schooner's no pain, right?
Same.
Never mind.
It appears that four of the Commission members have conflicts on that matter, leaving us unable to take action on it, and what would you suggest we do?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, at the end of the meeting, ask your permission to call a special meeting next Wednesday, at which time we should have members that do not have conflicts, and then because we do have four conflicts, we'll have to draw straws. But we have to have the non-conflicted members here.
And that would be a special meeting either before or after our study session next Wednesday?
Yes, sir. So, there's no action to be taken, Mr. Chairman. You can move on to item number 10.
Item number 10, case 5.0344, PD-164A, application by the City of Palm Springs for final design for the Palm Springs Convention Center, northerly Parking Lot and Landscape Plan located at 277 North Avenida Caballeros, Zone PD 164, Section 14. And again, on that particular matter, I would have to abstain, again, because of the proximity of the office where my law firm is located and in which I have some ownership interest.
Mr. Chairman, I'll have to abstain because I manage property adjacent to the Convention Center.
You're okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll have to abstain based on the fact that I'm employed by an agency that works for the Convention Center.
Mr. Chairman, I'll have to abstain, part ownership and property near the-
Appears, Mr. Evans, that we don't have a quorum and can't take action on that matter.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. That's all you need to do. Thank you, and-
We'll move next then to, I guess we're to item 12 at this point, general plan update.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick update. We do have our third steering committee meeting scheduled for this Thursday, and we're going to be doing something pretty interesting, and that's developing a vision statement. So, that'll take up most of our meeting, and I'm looking forward to it, and I think the rest of the group is as well. So, that's going to be the guiding principle for most of the stuff we do.
Thank you. Work program priorities and subcommittee assignments. Anything on that, Mr. Evans?
We don't have any additional updates, Mr. Chairman.
City Council Cabinet Meeting?
Nothing, sir.
Section 14, Master Plan Subcommittee?
Nothing.
Hawkwoods Creek Resort Subcommittee?
I don't think the committee's been called for a meeting yet.
City Council Actions?
Mr. Chairman, the city council has been dark. I'm pleased to report there's no updates.
Item 14, Commission Staff Reports and Requests. Any requests from the Commission?
Comment?
How's the time?
Engineering did a nice job in straightening up that alignment issue at Alejo in Palm Canyon. It flows nicely now and it just, it's a lot more comfortable intersection, so that was good. And just some observations that a friend of mine's a developer bought one of the homes of the canyons around Bolardo, and they're just very high-quality construction, and it's going to be a good development when it's done. They're really pleased with the project. And as I was driving by there, Kentucky Fried Chicken is gone. It's a pile of rubble. That's all that's left in the lot, so expect by Friday, we'll be down to virgin soil. They're moving.
Lot of things going on. Any other comments? Mr. Evans, any final comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a few things for you with the Commission's agreement to take up the matters that we did not have a quorum. There is some time sensitivity. We'll work with the chairman on posting a special meeting for September 3rd, at which time we think we'll have a quorum for those two items. We'll have that precede at 2:00, though, our Planning Commission Study Session. We don't have a huge agenda for you, at least as of today.
Do we need to take any action to formalize that?
No, sir. I just need to let you know. The second item is I'm pleased to introduce a new staff member. Matthew Feskey has been sitting in the audience. If you can give everybody a wave. Matthew is a gentleman that's changed careers. He was in the high-tech industry, took some time off, went out and got a planning degree, has worked in a couple of communities, and has decided to work for a municipal organization and work for the value of the work that you do, as opposed to the compensation that you may or may not get. So, Matthew's going to be a good member. He's got a great personality, and we're really pleased to have him added to our planning staff and team.
Welcome, Matthew. We'll look forward to working with you.
Yeah, let's see. The next item is our design review assignments, design review rotations. We have Commissioner Hokanado is the last one on the list. He is finishing up August. In fact, I think he has finished August.
Thank you very much. Had a wonderful time.
And we need to appoint Commissioners to participate with design review for September, October, November, and December.
I'll take December.
I'll take October.
I'll take November.
You gotta be quick, Ricky. I just got stuck with September.
Diane and Tracy need a couple, too.
We'll just get them one slap.
Okay.
There are two for Monday?
Mondays at 3:00.
October. He said December.
November.
November. So, we got September?
Second and fourth, Monday.
Second and fourth.
Well, you can come the first and third.
Second and fourth, Monday?
Sorta.
Ricky, if that doesn't work well for you, we can wait and see if Diane or- September might be a tough month for you with school starting, so maybe- Well, why don't we hold up then with the rest of these until our study session when we have other two Commissioners here, and maybe we can fill out the schedule then without imposing on Ricky to do it in September, which I'm sure is going to be a tough month for him. Okay?
And then the, I think the last item I have, Mr. Chairman, on September 16th, beginning at 6:00 PM, one of the most exciting programs that the city ever puts on, it's the Board Commission Orientation Session. The city attorney and the city clerk give you an update on the Brown Act, conflict of interest, fair hearings, all kinds of exciting stuff that I've covered briefly with all of you. Do they have copies of this in writing? We'll get you a copy of this so you can make sure you get it on your calendar. The laws have changed, so there is some value to having even existing Commissioners think about attending, but that's- September 16th, which is a Tuesday, 6:00 PM.
I would encourage both of our new Commissioners to attend that session. It really is worthwhile at least once, and probably a good idea for the rest of us to go again, too, if we can.
We'll get you a note in writing on that and make sure that it's out to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I have. I thank you very much for a fairly long- I thank you very much for a fairly long meeting today.
Okay, thank you all, and meeting's adjourned.